Good morning. I want to welcome everybody to the May 9th regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners. And we have Reverend Michael Lewis from Roswell Street Baptist Church will lead us in invocation. And then we have, are you leading the pledge this morning? Okay, all right, good. So you'll all stand for invocation and the pledge?
Let's bow together in prayer. Abba Father, we come before your throne this day thanking you, Lord, for the wonderful blessing of prayer and the privilege to invoke your presence upon this gathering today. We thank you, Lord, for these, your public servants. And Lord, we acknowledge with them, both leaders and residents of this community, that we need your wisdom. We need a light from heaven, from above, to guide and to lead all of our deliberations. We thank you that you are the Father of lights with whom there's no veribleness nor shadow of turning. And we thank you that every good and perfect gift comes down from above. And Lord, as King Solomon asked, the wisest man who ever lived, he didn't pray for riches, he didn't pray for fame, but he just simply prayed for a wise and understanding heart of knowing how to lead the people. Lord, this is our humble prayer for our leaders of this community. It's our prayer, Lord, that you would guide in this session. And we are so thankful, Lord, to live in Cobb County. We thank you for this city of Marietta, and we thank you for all the communities that make up Cobb County. And we pray your blessing over this community and that you would lead us today. Father, we humbly submit this prayer in respect for people of all different faiths, and we submit it in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen.
And I want to thank firefighter Gregory Coleman from Station 16 Bravo Shift for leading us in the pledge this morning. It's good to see young men and women up here, future of America, paying their paychecks so I can someday retire. That'll be 10 bucks. All right, just a couple admin announcements. After our agenda work session yesterday, we're going to be moving some things off the consent agenda onto the regular agenda so you have some visibility of what we're doing with your money in this county. So for consent item number seven, which is a DOT item, it'll be moved to Tab 5, Item 12. So if you've got your book there, it's Consent Item Number Seven, it'll be moved to Tab 5, Item 12. And then Consent Item Number 11, which is a property management issue, we're going to create a whole new tab for that under Support Services. And then Consent Item Number 24, which is a sheriff's office issue, we'll move that and make that a whole different tab, too. So that'll become very manifest, is why we're doing that, as we talk about it. There's some sums of money involved there, there's some appointments that I think the public should be privy to, and so I've asked them to move that to Consent, to Regular Agenda, so that you can see them all. So with that, we have a new county manager, in parentheses, interim, Rob Hosack, who has a presentation to make. And I believe you want the board to join you? Is that correct? Okay, great.
And as I invite the Board of Commissioners to come down, could I ask Keith and Linda to come on up? Keith Mazonkey and Linda Burke were the co-chairs of our Martha Logue Management Award this year. This award is presented by the Excel Alumni Association. It is basically an award that recognizes an outstanding manager who kind of followed the footsteps of one of the county's best, Martha Logue. I would be remiss if I did not ask if Sarah, who is Martha's daughter, if she's in the audience and is also a county employee, if you could come on up? Very good. Thank you, Linda. I will just say, prior to turning the program over to Linda and Keith, this association does fantastic things. At risk of showing my age, I graduated from the program in 1992, so it's been around a good while, and I think that it kind of helps, kind of helps build leaders, and it allows for an opportunity to learn or apply what you learn in a classroom setting to the everyday management activities of the county. With that being said, Keith, could you please proceed?
Sure, thank you. Before we be the nominees, I want to tell you a little bit about Martha Logue. Martha earned her degree in business from Pennsyl College, and in 1983, she took the Certified Public Accounting exam, achieving the highest score on the test in the state of Georgia. In 1984, Martha joined Cobb County in the Internal Audit Department as Senior Auditor, and was quickly promoted to the position of Project Accounting Supervisor as a result of her talents in leadership. Martha's contributions played an important part in Cobb County's transportation road improvement study that led to the passage of the county's first road improvement sales tax in 1985. Following up on those efforts, she developed Cobb County's first comprehensive annual financial report, an accomplishment, earning the Honor of Government Finance Officers Association Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Her outstanding communication skills matched with her ability to foster a team atmosphere helped her to excel in her role as the county's Assistant Comptroller. Her leadership skills, problem-solving abilities, management style, professionalism, commitment to excellence, and high ethical standards provide the basis for this prestigious Martha Logue Excellence in Leadership Award. And with that, Mandy Elliott will read the nominees.
Good morning. As I introduce the nominees, please come forward. Randy Kreider, Fire Chief, Fire Department. And Beth Kish, Elections and Registration Manager, Board of Elections and Registration. And unfortunately, Beth cannot be with us this morning. We want to take a moment to thank all the family members who have attended and ask them to stand. Thank you. We also want to recognize any previous Martha Logue Award winners and ask them to stand. Now let me tell you a little bit about this year's winner. Our winner has effectively and efficiently led his department through an economic downturn while delivering high results. He's initiated five-year strategic plans for departments under his leadership. He encourages staff to continue education and training and allows staff the latitude to self-initiate projects and programs that bring added value to the department and to Cobb County citizens. By continuing to embrace technology, he provides better service to the citizens as well as streamlines employees' business procedures. He supports the community by serving as a member of the Kennison Regional Hospital Health Board, Board of the Marietta Youth Museum, and the Cobb County Safety Village Foundation. He has served the county for 32 years. Beginning his career with Cobb County as a firefighter, paramedic in 1985, and working his way up the ranks, was appointed as Cobb County Fire Chief in 2008. He was appointed as Director of Public Safety in 2014, and now leads the over 1,600 personnel. The winner's character, management ability, innovation, and leadership have emulated the traits of Martha Logue, and we are pleased to recognize Director Sam Heaton with the 2017 Martha Logue Exit to Leadership Award. Congratulations.
There you go. Well, first of all, thank you all, appreciate it very much. You know, Jackie's gonna laugh, but it truly is an honor to be recognized. There's, anything that I've ever done in my career has been on the wings of so many truly people that work with me, and support we've had from the Board, the support we have from the citizens and public safety has been tremendous. It's an honor to be up here with Chief Kreider, and I do not know Ms. Kish, but I'm sure she's well-deserving as well, as many in this county. I can tell you that Mr. Hankerson set kind of a standard years ago of, you work your butt off. And I think there are so many in this audience and in this county that could be standing right here receiving this award. So with that, thank you so very much, I appreciate it. To the Board, thanks again for your support. Rob, look forward to working with you, sir. Thank you.
I think Director Heaton reflects both Mr. Hankerson's vision about how we grow leaders in this county, and also reflects, I'm not sure I saw that in writing anywhere about us working our butts off, but if it's not there, we need to put it in there. I think that speaks right to the heart of the matter. So congratulations, Director Heaton, and also all the other nominees. With that, we'll go to Tab 3, and I believe we have some, do we have any speakers for public comment?
Yes, sir. We have three people today. First, with David Birkenbine.
Okay. David, welcome back.
Morning, Commissioner, County Commissioners, County Manager, named David Birkenbine, I live in Mapleton, talking on the medical burn ban. Last time I kind of touched on the amendment we had in 2016 on medical burn ban, I can't quite figure out why we changed the wording, and why, or how the Board come to be that they come to a conclusion it needed to be changed. But when the fire, the fire chief, Dillinger, she had a good, she had a good point. She put in a medical burn ban for people that had medical problems. I don't love any other program or any other thing for basically people with chronic disease or disabling disease that you put an exception in. You don't have an exception in a bathroom for a handrail, you don't have exception on the sidewalk for, you build ramps, you don't say, well, you know, this is, we're gonna put in a half a ramp because, you know, we don't need to accommodate everything. A thousand foot for these people is not much. And with people, like I say, 2,000 people per square mile, they want to burn, I mean, it's crazy. It was working okay before, where you could have campfires, you could have ceremonial fires, you could have all this other stuff. But in 2006, when the medical burn ban come in, in 2007, they come with an uproar, oh, you're infringing on my right to burn. Well, the same thing happened when the cigarette smoking, when you went into restaurants. It's gonna be a slow progress. We're getting more and more people in Cobb County, and it got to accommodate everyone, not give them special privilege, accommodate like we do everybody else. We gotta have accommodations. And this is one accommodation that we need. The people in medical burn bans, they struggle. If they didn't, they wouldn't have the medical burn ban. And if there's any question of their medical problems, if the doctors know it ain't suffice enough, if it doesn't take and satisfy you that their chronic illness is severe, then investigate them, look at them, go talk to them, or, you know, have a review process to whether they'll come in and say, you know, how, really, how bad off are you? Well, if you walk in with oxygen, if you're on oxygen 24 hours a day in the home, you know, you're kind of confined because you're onto a hose. If you have a oxygen generator with you, that's fine, but you'll wear, you'll wear masks outside for pollution, but to have this, to have this Part C in this code year around when you have ozone levels, and it's hard to breathe anyway, and who wants to start a fire in 100-degree weather, 90-degree weather, and let it smoke? I mean, it'll smoke. And these pits, they are just, just an abuse process for people that do want to burn trash because they'll build little fires. You know, these people in the country, they build little fires, and that's how they got rid of their yard debris. They'll, they'll throw a little bit at a time, and you can't see where the smoke come from, but you can still smell it. And if you smell it, then you got the particulate pollution coming into the air, and it gets into your lungs, and it really affects the people, and it, you know, it's bothersome. And we need to take them back up to people on a medical burn ban. And I'm sorry, I don't have a bunch of people out here, back behind me, it's just me. Like I say, we'll get there, and we have a community deal this weekend in Mapleton, Mapleton Day. Invite everybody out to it, have fun, come and enjoy it. And Commissioners' boys, Chairman's boys, we're gonna be happy to see you there tonight. Hopefully, all the people that are online on the Mapleton Improvement Committee that's been talking and say they're gonna be there, I hope they're gonna be there, because we should have had quite a few here today, too. But Mapleton needs to be brought back into fold of Cobb County because y'all leaving us behind. But hopefully, you'll be able to get some ideas and people to share with you tonight, and you can come back and kind of help bring us out and up.
Hold on one second, Dave. Is Randy still here? Could you come on up for a second, Randy? Now, I understand that people, they have backdoor barbecues, stone barbecues in their backyard, they can, they can cook hot dogs and hamburgers on that year-round. But I thought there was, I thought there was a ban on open-air burning during certain parts of the year.
There is. From, from May 1st to September 30th, there's a total burn ban.
Okay. So if they're stacking leaves and...
Can't do that.
They can't do that, and no matter how much they try to hide it, there's no way that they're gonna hide it if these called and one of your people show up.
Right. If they call 911, we're going.
Okay, all right. Just wanted, I just want to make sure, because you said something about 120-degree weather, and I was like, I thought we had a ban, so. But anyway, I know it doesn't get to all your issues, David, but if you do find someone that's violating the open-air ban between May and September, call 911.
Well, that's, that's where the, that's where the judgment call comes in.
Okay, well...
And that's where, you know, it gets complicated, but yeah.
But when in doubt, just call 911.
I think Mr. Birkenbine's biggest concern is even people that are in a medical burn ban that are burning in the outdoor pits, if you will, that are legal.
Right.
I think his concern is that they're burning material that's illegal, that's one of it. But I also think that he's leaning toward a thousand-feet perimeter around that medical burn ban for a total burn ban. No chimneys, no fire bowls or anything.
I get that part, sure.
But you can have barbecue pits, you know, for the food consumption.
Right.
But you already had laws on there that sunburning was already...
Okay, all right, thanks. Appreciate it, Dave, as always.
Cynthia Patterson.
My name is Cynthia Patterson, and I live in District 2. Thank you for issuing the $27.6 million of Park Bond 2008 on April 11th. We look forward to the additional $12.4 million during Chairman Boyce's term in office. Undeveloped land for green space is disappearing at an alarming rate. Chairman Boyce's statement in the May 1 Atlanta Journal-Constitution article caught my eye. Chairman Boyce said, "We have approached the owners with our offers, and we are awaiting their response. We can't go above their appraisals. Those who do not accept our offers means we will go farther down the list. It would be a shame to lose prime land because the county and the owners cannot settle on a purchase price. There are many ways to preserve land in addition to an outright purchase. Land trusts can provide temporary funding to hold the land until the county purchases it. Conservation easements prevent land from being developed in perpetuity, and the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority, Jifa, provides extremely low-cost loans." Milton and Johns Creek approved referenda totaling $65 million for land conservation and green space in 2016. These measures were supported by the Georgia Conservancy, the Trust for Public Land, Land Trust Alliance, and the Nature Conservancy in Georgia. February 2017, three months ago, Brookhaven was awarded a $5.7 million loan by the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority to finance purchasing 33 acres of forested land adjacent to Peachtree de Cab Airport. This acquisition will preserve one of the largest remaining tracts of urban forest in metro Atlanta and protect the Peachtree Creek watershed. The land will include unpaved walking trails as part of the green space. The city will pay 0.89% interest on the 20-year loan, yes, less than 1% interest, saving Brookhaven millions of dollars that can be used to purchase more green space. Jifa facilitates programs that conserve and protect Georgia's energy, land, and water resources. Among many projects, Jifa provides loans for land conservation purchases and conservation What is Cobb County doing to take advantage of creative financing to purchase and preserve green space? Thank you.
Not so fast, not so fast. Okay. All right, Bill, can we use the Park Bond money to do what she's proposing?
In order to secure other loans?
That's what she's suggesting.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, but we can use general fund money to do that if we so choose.
General fund money?
Okay.
Grants?
Right.
You can apply for them, yes.
Okay, but you see what I'm trying to see here? Here's our challenge right now. We have, in fact, gone to a lot of the landowners, and by law, guard me on this one, Bill, all right? Watch what I say here. We cannot give them more than what our appraised value is of the property. Right, Bill?
Correct.
Okay, so we've gone to several property owners and told them this is the best we can do, and they're blocking. So I just want to make it very clear, up here, we're doing our best, we've come up with the money, but ultimately, it's in the hands of the landowner where they decide whether they're gonna accept our offer or not. And we can't negotiate above a certain price. And I want to be on record very early about this, is that I know we haven't gotten the whole 40 million that you're looking for, but I've told you I'm gonna work to that. But there comes a point where the voter, citizen also has, there's a partner, a part of this, of this process. If they so choose not to accept our offer, there's nothing I can legally do, all right, to do that. So I just want you to upfront here, we're having some issues right now with some property owners. Okay? So that's why we haven't released the names of the property, because it's no sense making some property known to you, and then turns out they won't accept the offer, and then all we have is bad blood in the water. So once we have firm, solid contracts, we'll release those names to you, and we'll also explore these other options as you're talking about. But I want to be very honest with you, Cynthia, 2018's gonna be a very, very tight year because of my commitment not to raise taxes, except for the only exception was for the bond for the green space. So I'm hung with that, on that petard, but we'll try to find a way to work through this. But I appreciate those suggestions, they're very, very, very creative. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Roberta Clark? Cook, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay. Good morning. Good morning, Chairman, good morning, Chairman, Voice, and Commissioners, and welcome back, As you know, my name's Roberta Cook from Mapleton, Georgia. I'm here to express both appreciation and disappointment concerning the $40 million Park Bond funding, which was approved by Cobb County voters in November 2008 election. Finally, after almost nine years and a change in the Board of Commissioners' leadership, the $27.5 million in Park Bond money is now available to buy land for passive parks in Cobb County. It is illustrated here on the screen. You can see, there's a green line on the cup. Recently, and the green, the green line is the $27.5 million that has been approved and is working right now to purchase land. Recently, Chairman Boyce announced that taxes are a barrier to funding the $12.5 million needed to fulfill this program and to fill up our cup of $40 million. I ask you, how is that possible, when it's the taxpayers who agreed to the $40 million of indebtedness by our votes in November 4th, 2008? Have you forgotten that we are the people? We are, we, the people, are the voters and the taxpayers who overwhelmingly voted for $40 million to acquire land in Cobb County for use as public parks. Do you believe in government by the people for the people? Do you think your personal convictions about taxes should override the will of the people and our votes? We, the people, hired you to represent us, so I invite you, invite you to join us, the people, in honor of the full $40 million funding for parkland in Cobb County. If the audience would like to learn more about the 2008 Park Bond, visit our website that's on the screen, it's not showing. It's www.cobbparkscoalition.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Roberta.
There's no more public speakers.
All right, thank you. Okay, Tab 4 is the Consent Agenda, and before I call for a motion to accept, I just want to make one admin note here. Yesterday at the agenda meeting, I asked the Commissioners if they wanted to move item number 16, which is appointing Michael Murphy, Chairman's Assistant Official Projects, as the county representative to be for the Braves. I just want to make it very clear here, I've been very, very, I hoped I've succeeded in not getting between Commissioners and their constituents. If something's going on in the Commissioners' district, my line is, is if you've spoken to your Commissioner before I address the subject, and then when you address the subject, I'd like you to bring your Commissioner with you. I'm just very, very sensitive to the fact that sometimes, you know, I may do things a little bit different than the Commissioner, but the Commissioners represent their districts. Mr. Murphy is simply going to be dealing with issues related to the Braves and the Development Agreement, and he's gonna be working jointly with Commissioner Ott's Joint Task Force, so there, so we all have, it's a lot of moving parts over there, but I just want, the Board wants to be kept informed about the Braves Stadium, which is Development Agreement, and in a part of that consequence, the Battery Park sometimes comes up in those discussions. But I want to be very clear... But I want to be very clear here, the Battery Park is not his, is not his ballpark. That belongs to Commissioner Ott because that's his, that's outside our development agreement. Obviously, if Mr. Murphy sees some things, he'll be talking Mr. Commissioner Ott about that. But as Commissioner Cupid said yesterday, we have an agreement with the Braves about what, what our partnership is, and Mr. Murphy will be dealing with those, with that relationship based on that development agreement. Anything above and beyond that gets in some dicey area, and I'm sure Commissioner Ott will be coming to me if, if we're overstepping our authority. So Michael Murphy will be, is a special projects for the whole board, but I just want everybody to know here that he's simply replacing Mr. Hankerson because Mr. Hankerson's retired, and we have some loose ends out there, as I keep saying, one of them being how we're going to finish paying for the $14 million, our agreement with them, and some other issues that pop up from time to time, as you know, like fireworks late at night that are really a state issue, but I think that that's something that he can deal with along with Commissioner Ott that's in his district. So Commissioner Ott, you have some comments about that? And again, I apologize, Commissioner Ott wasn't there at the meeting yesterday, which is why it's very dangerous to have informal agreements that the Commissioner who owns that area isn't there to hear what their comments are.
No, I don't, I don't have any comments. I mean, Michael Murphy and I attended a meeting yesterday, actually, with the Braves and the Fire Marshal and all that to work through some issues that have popped up. No, I think it's going to work the same as it did with the county manager and myself. Now, what I would like to do, if, sorry, before we vote on the consent, the reason I asked the question yesterday about number four, which was the abandonment of a portion of a road?
Right.
We had a public speaker one or two meetings ago asked why we don't get paid for that, and if it would be all right with the chairman, I'd like Jim Wilgus to come up and just explain.
Yeah, that's a good idea, absolutely.
And simply because we had a, a public speaker.
Somebody else may have the same question from the audience, absolutely. Jim?
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. County Manager. All right, with, with land with right of way, if it was deeded and dedicated and turned over to the county for no cost, for no cost, we do not sell it back. And that's where, that's what the case law, it follows the current case law. If we, if two property owners there deemed to own to the middle of the road, then we give that property to both, to both owners if we abandon it.
Jim? And again, I want to remind everybody that's watching in the audience, we spent a lot of time in our agenda prep on these consent items, and as we saw today, we pulled three items off. So even though we're going to be voting on this right now in a matter of minutes, I can assure you, we did not discuss this consent item yesterday in a matter of minutes, it was an extensive discussion. So that, yeah, and we all agreed on the moods, correct. Thank you. So I moved to approve the, the items on the consent agenda, except for moving item number seven to Tab 5, M12, item number 11 to the regular agenda, and item 24 to regular agenda. And in, in part of that motion is to authorize the execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. And it passes five to zero. Thank you. All right, with that, we, I believe, go to Tab 5 now, right? And Mr. Wilgus, I believe you have the podium.
Thanks, sir. We have 12 items this morning. Our first item is to approve change order number one final to the contract with CMES Inc. for roadway and pedestrian improvements on Six Flags Drive and Riverside Parkway Sidewalk. Six Flags Drive is an approved project in the roadway safety and operational improvements component of the 2011 SPOSS Transportation Improvement Program. Riverside Parkway Sidewalk is an approved project in the sidewalks component of the 2011 SPOSS Transportation Improvement Program. Construction is complete in change order number one final to the contract with CMES. A savings to the project in a combined amount of $366,838.32 is requested due to variations between the original and final planned quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with CMES Inc., a combined savings to the projects in the amount of $366,838.32 for roadway and pedestrian improvements on Six Flags Drive and Riverside Parkway Sidewalk.
Commissioner Cupid?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. It passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our second item is to approve change order number one final to the contract with D and H Construction Company, Inc. for intersection improvements on East-West Connector Cooper Lake Road. East-West Connector at Cooper Lake Road is an approved intersection improvements project in the 2016 SPOSS Transportation Improvement Program. Construction is complete and change order number one final to the contract with D and H Construction Company, a savings to the project in the amount of $21,368.69 is requested due to variations between the original and final planned quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with D and H Construction Company, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $21,368.69 for intersection improvements on East-West Connector at Cooper Lake Road.
Commissioner Ott?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number three is to approve project number X 2218 to the 2016 countywide unit price contract with D and H Construction Company, Inc. for drainage system improvements on Maybreeze Road at Shallowford Road. Drainage system improvements is an approved component of the 2016 SPOSS Transportation Improvement Program. The low bid of $241,427.50 from D and H Construction Company was reviewed and found to be reasonable and responsive. Bid tabulation consisted of $187,882.52 in roadway costs and $53,545 in water system costs. The completion date for this project is 60 consecutive calendar days from issuance of notice received. We request the Board of Commissioners approve project number X 2218 to the 2016 countywide unit price contract with D and H Construction, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $241,427.50 for drainage system improvements on Maybreeze Road at Shallowford Road.
Commissioner Burrow?
Yes. Before I make a motion to approve, I'd just like to point out that this is in front of Simpson Middle School and a very critical area there. Also, Maybreeze, this is on a wholly different subject, but Maybreeze Road is all one word, and some of the signage, street signs are two words.
Has it two words?
And I wanted to make sure the work order had been placed to change those out.
Yes, ma'am.
Correct.
Would make sure.
Could we have that done by noon?
Probably not, sir. Takes a little longer to make a sign.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number four is to approve project number X 2118-TO number 01 to the 2016 Master Task Order Contract with Moreland Outtabelly Associates, Inc. for engineering design of Powers Ferry Drive over Rottenwood Creek Tributary. Powers Ferry Drive over Rottenwood Creek Tributary, previously identified as Powers Creek, is an approved project in the Bridges and Coverts component of the 2016 SPOSS Transportation Improvement Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve project number X 2118-TO number 01 to the 2016 Master Task Order Contract with Moreland Outtabelly Associates, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $140,248 for engineering design of Powers Ferry Drive over Rottenwood Creek Tributary.
Commissioner Ott?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number five is to approve project number X 2301-TO number 02 to the 2016 Master Task Order Contract with Pond &amp; Company for engineering design of intersection improvements on Acworth-Dewest Road at Jim Owens Road, Mars Hill Church Road. Acworth-Dewest Road at Jim Owens Church, Jim Owens Road, Mars Hill Church Road is an approved project in the intersection improvements component of the 2016 SPOSS Transportation Improvement Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve project number X 2301-TO number 02 to the 2016 Master Task Order Contract with Pond &amp; Company in an amount not to exceed $209,305 for engineering design of intersection improvements on Acworth-Dewest Road at Jim Owens Road, Mars Hill Church Road.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Motion to approve is presented, sir.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number six is to approve, to approve recommended ranking of the three most qualified firms for engineering design of Kennesaw Mountain Pedestrian Improvements. Kennesaw Mountain Pedestrian Improvements, also known as Cheatham Hill Multi-Use Trail, is an approved congestion relief and mobility improvements project in the 2016 SPOSS Transportation Improvement Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve the recommended ranking of the three most qualified firms for engineering design of Kennesaw Mountain Pedestrian Improvements, also known as Cheatham, Cheatham Hill Multi-Use Trail, and authorize negotiations for final scope and, uh, final scope of service and fees, beginning with the top-ranked firm Heath &amp; Lineback Engineers, Inc., utilizing Selection Process 1 competitive negotiations.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number seven is to approve Amendment Number One to the Utility Relocation Agreement with Georgia Power Company for preliminary engineering and relocation of facilities on Cobb Parkway at Wendy Hill Road. Cobb Parkway at Wendy Hill Road is an approved intersection safety and operational improvement project in the 2011 SPOSS Transportation Improvement Program. Construction of this project has required contractors to work in a highly congested area with heavy, heavy traffic conditions, which has caused extreme site accessibility and issues for equipment and workers. As a result, final transmission relocation costs have exceeded the original estimate previously approved. Amendment Number One to the URA with Georgia Power Company in an amount not to exceed $93,000 is requested for increased construction labor costs required to complete the transmission locations, uh, relocation for this project. We request the Board of Commissioners approve Amendment Number One to the Utility Relocation Agreement with Georgia Power Company in an amount not to exceed $93,000 for additional costs associated with preliminary engineering and relocation of facilities at Cobb Parkway at Wendy Hill Road.
Commissioner Ott?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number eight is to approve Amendment Number One to the Utility Relocation Agreement with Georgia Power Company for the I-285 Multi-Use Bridge. I-285 Multi-Use Bridge project consists of a bridge spanning Galleria Drive, I-285, Circle 75 Parkway to SunTrust Park. The total length of the project is approximately 1,110 feet. Construction of this project is substantially complete. However, financial, final transmission relocation costs have exceeded the original estimate previously, previously approved. Amendment Number One to the URA with Georgia Power Company in an amount not to exceed $19,177 is requested to complete transmission relocation for this project. We request the Board of Commissioners approve Amendment Number One to the Utility, Utility Relocation Agreement with Georgia Power Company in an amount not to exceed $19,177 for the I-285 Multi-Use Bridge project.
Commissioner Ott?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number nine is to approve an Amendment Number One to the Utility Relocation Agreement with Georgia Power Company for Cobb Parkway at I-285 westbound off-ramp and Spring Road, Circle 75 Parkway. Cobb Parkway US 41 at I-285 westbound off-ramp and Spring Road, Circle 75, Cobb Parkway US 41 at I-285 westbound off-ramp and Spring Road is an approved thoroughfare and mobility improvement project in the 2016 SPOSS Transportation Improvement Program. Amendment Number One to the URA with Georgia Power Company in an amount not to exceed $83,178 is requested for additional joint-use concrete poles required to complete, complete the transmission relocation for this project. We request the Board of Commissioners approve Amendment Number One to the Utility Relocation Agreement with Georgia Power Company in an amount not to exceed $83,178 for Cobb Parkway at I-285 westbound off-ramp and Spring Road, Circle 75 Parkway.
Commissioner Ott?
Just let me make a comment here. I want to just commend DOT and staff and all your partners. This project is one of many in that area that has greatly reduced the amount of traffic and congestion. I know the county manager and I were up there yesterday about 4:30 in the afternoon, and the traffic was flowing much smoother than it, it has in the past, and so just good job. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number 10 is to adopt a resolution to support Cumberland, Cumberland Community Improvement District's submission of a Transportation Improvement Program grant application to the Atlanta Regional Commission for construction of Acres Mill Ramp, Acres Mill Road Managed Lane Access. We request the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution to support the Cumberland Community Improvement District's submission of a Transportation Improvement Program grant application to the Atlanta Regional Commissioner, Commission for construction of Acres Mill Road Managed Lane Access.
Commissioner Ott?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number 11 is to adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a Transportation Improvement Program grant application to the Atlanta Regional Commission for master planning and engineering design of the Chattahoochee River Trail. We request the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a Transportation Improvement Program grant application to the Atlanta Regional Commission for master planning and engineering design of the Chattahoochee River Trail.
Commissioner Cupid?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our final item is moved from consent, it's, uh, seven there. This is to authorize creation of, of one new part-time facility maintenance worker position grade 2P and support, to support maintenance activities at the Cobb County International Airport, McCollum Field. The airport includes 310 acres of property that is currently maintained by an existing maintenance staff consisting of one full-time employee and one part-time employee. The proposed new part-time maintenance employee will supplement the existing staff and allow for increased two-man maintenance shift, uh, team shift to be scheduled. As a condition of receiving federal airport grants, the Federal Aviation Administration requires that any airport fees, rents collected be spent on airport expenses. Airport revenues consistently exceed airport operating expenses. Therefore, funding is available for this new part-time position from current airport fund balance reserves. We request the Board of Commissioners authorize the creation of one new part-time facility maintenance worker position grade 2P to support airport maintenance at Cobb County International Airport, McCollum Field, effective immediately, at a cost not to exceed $6,573 for the remainder of FY17.
Commissioner Burrow?
Yes. Thank you, Jim, and I know this is much needed, and I make a motion to approve.
Any discussions? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, next we have Jimmy, Jimmy Geese from Public Services.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Manager. Our first item this morning is for the Board to approve a contract with Crofton Associates to provide architectural and engineering design services for the historic Clarkdale Community Center under the 2016 Park SPOSS Program. Improvements to the Clarkdale Community Center will, will restore the ability for the public to use the building again as a gathering place. Proposals for this work were requested from pre-qualified professional services firms with indefinite delivery agreements with the county, and Crofton Associates presented the lowest-cost proposal. Therefore, we're asking the Board to approve a contract with Crofton Associates in an amount not to exceed $73,100 to provide, to provide architecture and engineering design services to guide the preservation activities at the historic Clarkdale Community Center.
Okay, before I, I get, call Commissioner Cupid, do we make sure we have something on the board for the audience to see? Like with Jim Wilgus, they have, you know, just generally a summary. Okay, Commissioner Cupid?
This has been a long time coming for that community, and I'm glad to support this item today, and know we're working with staff to ensure that there's community participation in the design. I want that, motion to approve.
And second.
Uh, any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Our final item this morning is for the Board to authorize funding for the vacant full-time Recreation Program Coordinator position located at the Art Place Mountain View. Each of the county's art facilities is managed by a Recreation Program Coordinator. When the Coordinator for the Art Place Mountain View retired, the Coordinator from the Art Station Big Shanny was asked to temporarily manage both her center as well as the Art Place Mountain View. She did this admirably for over a year, but the option is no longer viable. Since January of this year, this coordinator has been located at the Art Place Mountain View full-time because of sheer program volume. This has left no full-time staff at the Art Station Big Shanny. No additional funding is needed for FY17 due to anticipated salary savings and our personnel services appropriation. So this time, we're asking the Board of Commissioners to authorize funding for the vacant Recreation Program Coordinator located at the Art Place Mountain View in the amount of $25,120.36 for the remainder of the FY17 budget and further authorize the corresponding budget transactions.
Commissioner Burrow?
Yes. Thank you, Jimmy, and just a little bit of background, this position, when the previous director retired a year or so ago, the same director at the, in the South Cobb area has been going back and forth and doing a dual role here, and she no longer can continue to do that. It's, um, so we're just adding this position back to a very busy art center at Mountain View. So with that, I make a motion to approve.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero. Thank you, Jimmy. All right, Tab 7, Dana?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Dana Johnson, Cobb County Community Development. Here to present agenda item requesting the Board, uh, to suspend acceptance of the open space community zoning district, overlay district, until September first, 2017, um, while staff reviews and makes, uh, recommendations for changes to that in the July code amendments cycle. Um, if the Board did approve changes to the OSC code prior to September first, then the moratorium would, would end upon approval by the Board of Commissioners of the, of the changed code. With that, sir, I ask you to please consider, um, voting on this particular moratorium, sir.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, if you could enlighten us on the process that we do choose to make changes to OSC, the timeframe on that.
Yes, sir. Um, staff is working on the changes right now. Uh, the changes will be sent to legal this week for a, a attorney review prior to their release to the public. There'll be public hearings in June and July. Uh, this is the second meeting, the night meeting of each of those particular meetings, which off the top of my head, I cannot remember, so I apologize.
No problem.
Um, but the two night meetings in June and July, uh, will be the two public hearings for those. Since this is in chapter one thirty-four, the planning commission will make a recommendation at their July public hearing as well, sir.
And the current OSC code was put in place in what year did you call?
The OSC code was put in place in nineteen ninety-nine, sir, and there has been about ten revisions to the code since it was put in place in ninety-nine, sir.
Great. Well, I appreciate it, uh, something we all need to face during zoning, and we need to work this out so that we can have a little more smoother process, and I appreciate your efforts and the Board supporting all of us in that to make sure we come up with a 2017 version that will work for all of us. Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Ott.
Um, yeah, I just want to, I support, um, Commissioner Weatherford in this. Um, I was actually here when we wrote it, um, and a lot has happened since then, as Commissioner Weatherford kind of implied, and, and I think that, um, the initial intent and what's happening now are, are kind of different, and so I think some change is definitely necessary, and I think we do need to, uh, kind of put a moratorium until we make those changes.
I agree and support it as well. Um, and I think, um, it just needs to be noted that anything that is currently been submitted will not be impacted by this. Um, it's just future after today's date, anything will not be accepted, any OSC will not be accepted until probably September or until we can get this corrected.
Uh, Zachary, Commissioner. Yes.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? Call a question. Pass the five to zero. Thanks, Dana. Okay, tab eight, Tony.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, we have three policies to bring before the Board today for approval. Uh, two of the policies are revisions, uh, one is a new policy. All three are recommended by the Compensation Committee. The first policy is a revision of the compensatory leave policy. Um, this policy was originally, a recommendation was, was made by, to the Board of Commissioners in 2012 by the Citizens Oversight Committee. Um, the recommendation was delayed until review under the class and pay study. Um, after the Archer company completed their review, they supported the same recommendation to change the policy from a one-to-one, uh, accrual ratio to a one-to-one, I'm sorry, from a one-to-one point five ratio to a one-to-one ratio for those employees working in, uh, positions that are exempt from overtime but eligible to, to accrue compensatory leave.
We're gonna vote on each one of these individually, is that correct? Okay. So, Commissioner Cupid, I'll let you carry this one.
Okay. I move that the Board adopt the change to the annual leave policy.
Compensatory leave.
Compensatory leave. Okay.
There you go. We'll do the other one in a second.
Okay, I see three, I see compensatory leave, annual leave, and bereavement leave. Are we doing all three separately?
Yes, we are, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
All right. I move that we adopt the amendments to the compensatory leave policy.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Yeah, Commissioner Weatherford, you have a comment?
Yes, sir. Could you please, uh, I know I've gotten some comments about this. I'm sure that this, uh, some of the employees that are receiving this are not, uh, pleased with this, but in our, according to Archer study and surrounding areas, are we one of a few that have this policy?
Um, the Archer study found only one other jurisdiction in the metro area that offered a similar policy, and their policy was a one-to-one ratio like was recommended here.
So no one has the one-point-five that you can recall?
No, sir, that, not that we found, or that Archer found, or ourselves.
All right, and you mentioned, uh, in the agenda item grade twenty-two, could you give me an idea of what grade, what that is, uh, an example of one of those positions?
Um, it's a, it's a non-supervisory, professional-level position, probably something like an engineer one, engineer two, um, that would fall there. Usually it's the, that's the borderline right moving into management and supervision, and those employees in management supervision are not eligible for compensatory leave.
And this would have no financial impact one way or the other, unless, other than?
No direct financial impact, no, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr.
Commissioner Ott.
Um, Tony, my understanding was that the one, it was changed to one-point-five as a result of a lawsuit, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that, back in the early nineties.
Okay, what was the, what was the rationale, or what was the basis of the lawsuit?
Um, it was.
Why did we have to change it to one-point-five?
I, I don't know that I can articulate the terms of the lawsuit. There was a class action suit back in the early nineties, uh, that, uh, was filed, and as part of that settlement of the lawsuit, there was a, a cause to change the policy to resolve that.
Can we make a change as a result of a lawsuit? I mean, we're changing something that was changed, Bill.
I know Deborah was involved in that process, and she, she reviewed this, and she said it was okay to be able to go forward with it, yes.
Okay, let me just ask a question, because I wasn't there yesterday. So I just want to make sure I understand what we're doing. Right now, for every hour and a half that these employees work, they get an hour of compensation, other way around?
Other way around.
So, so right now, we're giving them an hour and a half for every hour? And what do the employees that are subject to overtime rules, aren't they getting time and a half?
They get time and a half and overtime pay.
Right, so we're basically gonna start treating, um, these employees differently?
Yes, sir, and that, these are employees that meet FLSA exemption from overtime. They have an additional benefit.
What's the additional benefit?
That they earn compensatory leave, they're eligible to earn compensatory leave, that's a county policy, uh, program that's been.
Right, but why wouldn't we want to give them time and a half, just like everybody else, if it's overtime? What's the difference whether it's compensatory or overtime pay?
Uh, I, that was a recommendation from the committee, uh, Citizens Oversight, that was, and so it, we, and we haven't found another jurisdiction that offers similarly.
Well, but other than the fact that for the rest of the employees, we offer pay and time and a half? And so now we're gonna start separating out employees, and the only difference being is compensatory leave versus overtime pay?
It's, it's, there's a difference in, because one's pay and one's leave, yes, sir. There, and it would be making a change there.
I have a problem with treating different employees different.
If I may share, Chairman, it's a typically a standard process across all industries to, um, not recognize overtime of exempt employees. They are typically, um, they are, they are typically expected to complete their work within whatever parameters are necessary to get the job done for a part-time employ, and I can't speak to the basis of the law. I just know that's since to be standard practice, not, uh, prefer, uh, particularly in private organizations. It's been my experience that in government organizations, we tend to provide, um, compensatory leave. And in my, um, past role working with the state, we provided a one-to-one ratio, and coming here, it's the first time I've ever heard of a one to point five to one ratio, which is, I think, a significant benefit for Cobb. But in looking at our leave policy, we did make changes where now we would be increasing the annual leave for employees. I must also recognize that there are other benefits that full-time employees have access to, that part-time employees do not have access to, and that has come to my attention since the time that I've been here. And so, you know, I, I can't speak for the policy basis for why, um, part-time employees are given one-point-five, um, hours for overtime pay, um, but I do believe that there's already a disparity in how we, and how, um, our employees receive benefits from the county based on their part-time or full-time status.
Uh, I'm sorry, and it's not a part-time and full-time, it's overtime and?
Overtime.
Yeah.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Uh, to Mr. Cupid's point, this is only dealing with full-time employees, correct?
That's correct.
Part-time employees do not get, they can't get overtime because they don't work over forty, right?
Uh, if they work over forty, they get overtime, yes, sir, but if they don't.
Do we have supervisory part-time people?
Um, there are some part-time supervisors in the county, yes, sir, but they are hourly paid, uh, and they earn overtime if they work more than forty.
So, in this particular grade twenty-two and below that we're talking about, I believe it says, um, typically would they be compensated, uh, this is pretty generic, but they get, be compensated salary-wise more than an hourly employee that gets overtime?
Um, their, their salary basis should be in, uh, someone to hire, yes, sir, than an hourly employee.
Do you have an idea how many employees this will affect?
There are three-hundred-and-sixty-seven employees as of yesterday.
Could you be a little more specific?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Burl.
But the compensatory leave is comp time. It's like hour to hour, but now, right now, it's hour to hour and a half.
That's correct.
And we're trying to make it hour to hour for comp time, no pay impact.
There is no pay impact, no, ma'am. It would be just leave, they, they can take off at a future time. It's accrued, and they could take it off at the time their supervisor scheduled for them to take it off, so.
And are all these salaried employees?
Yes, they are all, all salaried employees.
So, yeah, so.
Commissioner Ott.
My, my problem is, I know that we talked about, we do have certain superver, supervisory roles that do not have to check in on the time clock, okay? The ones that check in on the time clock are being treated the same as the employees that are not in these roles. And to me, if we have any employee that we're giving time and a half to because they go over their time, then I think they should all be treated the same. I understand that there are some that have to work until the, the work is done, okay? That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the ones that have to come in, check in with Cronus, the same as all the other employees, and they should be treated the same as the employees that are paid overtime. So, I mean, I can't support the change.
Well, our, our admins are salaried, but they still clock in and out every day. So, uh, I mean, so their comp time would go hour to hour, ma, I mean.
That's correct. If this policy.
Instead of, and they, they don't get overtime.
If it was approved, it would change to hour to hour for any hours over eighty in a pay period.
Okay.
So what happens? Do they have a choice between taking the overtime or the comp time?
Uh, uh, under the FLSA law that provides for compensatory leave, employees that work in hourly positions that are eligible for overtime, it can be, uh, determined by the government to either pay overtime or, or pay compensatory.
Right.
But not for, uh, salaried employees. This is something that's additional leave benefit that the county employees have. Other jurisdictions do not have that, that we know of around this area, other than, than the Cab County. That's the one county we found.
Can I ask?
Sure.
And follow-up to that, are, are you sharing that for other metro, um, metropolitan localities, that they are not offering any comp time for exempt employees except for the Cab?
Not in the same manner that our policy provides. They may have some where they, they have an unofficial comp time where they, if someone works off over this week, they may let them off early the next week, that kind of thing. They don't have an accrual basis like our county policy provides for.
Okay.
Sure.
One quick question. So, uh, to Mr. Ott's point, the employees that are getting the compensatory, compensatory extra time off, is that, uh, they check in with Cronus and the time clock, just like everybody else? So we know if they go over eighty hours in a pay period?
Yes, sir. Uh, those employees do clock in on Cronus, so that it automatically does the accrual and accumulation, so they clock in and out, so that it captures the hours.
Uh, to me, in my experience in the past, when we gave, uh, time off, time, you know, for supervisory or salary employees, uh, those employees never clocked in. They were in a different roles, and they could go and come as they pleased because they were working extra hours. It seems to me if we're requiring these employees to clock in and out, just like hourly employees, then I tend to agree with Commissioner Ott, that I don't think we should differentiate between them. If they were coming in and not having to clock in, it could go and come as they wanted, uh, and then take some time off because they worked five hours to extra day, you know, like our assistants are here to midnight with us, like you, Chairman Boyce. Uh, yeah, I tend to, I tend to think.
I just tend to get mixed up money.
So, uh, but they do clock in and out, so the only difference in them and the hourly employees is the fact that they get salary, not, and not hourly pay.
Uh, and that they don't get overtime pay, so they get compensatory leave instead of overtime.
Well, I understand, okay, thank you.
But the industry standard has been one-for-one for comp time and one-point-five for, for overtime. So we're not doing anything here that's out of the ordinary, okay? Uh, so, if, if I thought we were, we're the exception to the rule, and apparently we were for the longest time, but it was driven by a lawsuit, all right, to make an adjustment to a wrong, but that wrong has now been righted, why wouldn't you go back to the industry standard?
Well, but to answer the question, I mean, we're not talking dollars here, we're talking time, and I think that, you know, and, and as Commissioner Weatherford said, when we talk about our assistants, I guarantee you, they work a whole lot longer than just when they're cocking in. I mean, they, you know, we have town hall meetings and all these other things, and I just think, and there's plenty of other employees here that, you know, if, if they're cocking in, they should be treated the same as everybody else.
Uh, I, I agree, and, and, you know, on the principle, but again, the industry standard's always been forever, one-point-one for comp time, one-point-five for overtime. And, you know, the bottom line is, this goes to the heart of the issue about sick leave. We're trying to track time. In fact, you and I both know, like the commissioners here, the joke is, this is a part-time job. You only work from six in the morning to six at night. Um, we're trying to track something here that, in fact, we're trying to, we're trying to have some sort of system that tracks all the time, and it doesn't do that. So what we've done is we've tried to address an fairness issue, something that we realize people are working excess hours. And the industry standard has been that if, if you're compensatory, in the compensatory category, you get one-point-one extra hour for every hour that you work, and if you're in sal, if you're salaried, you get one-point-five. And I think that addresses, that tried to correct the wrong. And if, uh, the bottom line is, is I saw working in civil service, you know, working in civil service, it's up to the manager, all right, and also the employee. You know, you can't mandate somebody in certain, most circumstances to work longer than what they can, what's supposed to work. If they're gonna agree to work those, those eighty hours, all right, you can't direct them to work more than eighty, except under certain circumstances, correct? So that's a manageable number. Yeah, but it's up to the manager to work, to get the work done in a certain period of time, and my, you know, and I realize that government's different, and we want to make sure we're flexible enough to do it, but on the other hand, um, you could try, you know, you could, you can make exceptions for every rule, and you end up with this hybrid system that's really hard, it's very difficult to track. So my line is, let's go back to the industry standard. Uh, it's a fair standard, it's one that's been tried and true, and, uh, I don't, you know, uh, I get, I get Commissioner Ott's point of view, but in one, trust me, if, if the comp time people could get the extra one-point-five in pay, they'd take that over the hour any day, but they can't, because that's the way the system's set up. So, my thought is, the, the Compensation Committee has looked at this, we, uh, we had civilians on that committee who were, who represent industry as well as government. Their recommendation, without any kind of arm to it, seems to go back to the one-point-oh. So, um, I think we should take their advice, because we call them together and ask for their advice, so. Any further discussion? Commissioner Ott?
No.
Okay, call a question. And it passes three to two with Commissioners Weatherford and Commissioner Ott, uh, opposing. All right, next one.
Next one is the revision of the annual leave policy. In the class and pay study, the Archer company had surveyed the market and made a recommendation to adjust the leave accruals for annual leave, um, increasing the entry from ten days to thirteen days, um, and changing the scale up to twenty days, uh, twenty years of service with twenty-five days annually for, uh, employees working in full-time positions. You make a recommendation, the Board, uh, approve the revisions as recommended by the Compensation Committee as well.
Commissioner Cupid? Have a second?
Second.
In discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
The last policy is a bereavement leave policy. This was a recommendation from the compensation committee to create a bereavement leave policy for full-time and part-time employees to up to three days a year for the death of an immediate family member as defined in the policy.
Commissioner Cupid?
So moved.
Second.
We have a discussion. Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. All right, now we have a new, a new tab, I believe, Eddie?
Yes, ma'am.
Too late, too late, sorry.
It's not too late. It's not too late.
Okay, hold on, hold on, sit back down. She wants, we have someone who wants to change her vote, how do we do that legally? Without being sued?
I think.
I need to hear from Bill first.
Well, if it's during this meeting, then you can make a motion for you to be able to do that.
Oh, so he can move to rescind?
She can make a motion to reconsider.
Okay, reconsider, okay, so I'm I'm open to that.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the vote on the compensa- comp compensatory leave.
Okay, we have a second, we have a discussion, so.
I did, my discussion is, we, we didn't have any discussion with the employees as far as, you know, how it's going to.
That's not true. We went back for a month before we, before the compensation committee brought this back again. We had, we took this, we took this, we took this to the, to the, to the, Tony took this to the, to the employees or to their directors before we brought, we don't, we just don't rule overnight on this. We have a proposal and then we come back. And what we hear from Tony is to what was from the, from the employees, and then we vote on it at the compensation committee.
Well, this was the first I'd seen it when it came in our agenda books. And my, my assistant wasn't weighed, didn't weigh in.
Well, it was four thousand employees.
I mean, she's salaried and and gets comp time, so I don't, I mean, I.
I get it, that's why we're having a discussion, but we we don't just unilaterally make a decision at the compensation committee. You know, I ask for people to go back and, you know, like for instance, on the on the annual leave, all right? We went back several times, had a lot of discussion about that, the bereavement thing. So again, Tony, go ahead.
There there hasn't been anything presented out to employees, but this originally was brought to the board as part of the change with the compensation policy. And the board asked to bring, hold this and bring it at the same time we brought recommendations for annual leave policy. So it had been previously discussed with management that it was aware and 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 had been drafted and put out back in April when those policy changes were brought forward.
Okay, well, I'd I'd like to leave it at the one point five.
Okay, so we have a motion to reconsider, we have a second, any further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to ask Tony a question. Tony, the citizen oversight committee, what was their recommendation for the policy?
Their recommendation is if the county was going to continue to have the policy to to change it from a one to one point five to a one to one ratio.
And did the board adopt the recommendations of the citizen oversight committee?
All of the personnel policy recommendations from the committee were held to be a part of the class and pay study and then revisited, and that's what we've been doing, bringing forward individually what was recommended by Archer.
Okay, you know, I'm going to share that I do have some somewhat of a bias with respect to this because, you know, working in the, in the private sector, you know, if you're an exempt employee, you work until the job gets done. You know, I recognize that, you know, this is government and we serve a larger audience. And I think that our policy of even acknowledging compensatory time is our recognition of that difference. I think it's very generous. I think it honors those who do work hard and go above and beyond to ensure that we're tracking their overtime that they that they have. To go to a one and a half hour system, I feel is is beyond the level of generosity of doing one to one. But just know that we already increased, we just increased bereavement leave, which we did not have, and we just increased annual leave. So I just want us to take into consideration the compounding impact of all of those changes.
Okay, so.
Chairman.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Yes.
The wife said something, I'm sorry. Remember, we have to vote on the motion to reconsider first.
Right, right.
Before you would bring back.
Right, exactly. So I was just going to explain that. The first vote is that, oh, sure, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Cupid's point, I I would tend to agree, and I do agree because of the public sector, I think we are extremely generous, but in the private sector, if you work to get the job done, then you take off when you want to and you don't clock in and out.
I clocked in and out.
Typically.
I clocked in and out.
Well, I never had to do that. So I'm just saying, if you clock in and out, to me, that's the key. The fact that we're treating them as hourly employees because they have to clock in and out. If they didn't clock in and out and they were like any salaried person, then I would not, I'd totally agree with you. But the fact that we're requiring them to clock in and out to track their hours treats them like they're hourly employees and not salary employees.
You got that.
And that's where my hangup is. And other than that, I I agree with you, but that's my concern.
Okay. So I'm going to call for the motion to reconsider. And if you vote yes, that means you agree to reconsider, okay? So call, I call a question. And it passes five to zero, okay? Now, I'll let you carry the issue for reconsideration.
I would like to make a motion to leave the compensatory policy as one at one point five ratio.
Okay, we have a second, any discussion? So if we vote on this, if we vote on this, if you vote yes, you're agreeing to leave the compensa- compensatory policy at one point five to one. If you vote no, you oppose that, okay? You understand?
I may have a point of order, sir.
Yes.
I believe we had, we had a motion and approved, to approve it, we need to have a motion to approve it again and have it denied. She's introducing a different motion than we voted on. Is that correct?
No, we're reconsidering the vote now.
Yeah, reconsider the vote or reconsider her vote?
No, what what you did, there was a motion to reconsider the vote, which was approved.
All right, I apologize, not just her vote, yes.
No, but I'm glad you said something, make sure we stay out of hot water.
It's back to a new motion, which I just met.
Right. So again, if you vote yes, that means you're agreeing to leave the compensatory leave policy as is, one point five to one. If you vote no, you oppose that, okay? You ready? So I call the question. And it passes three to two, so that means we leave the policy as it is. Okay, we're good.
Thank you.
Good discussion.
I'm sorry to cause some trouble, but.
No problem, we're good. Eddie?
Good morning, Chairman Commissioners, County Manager. We have one item today. We ask that the Board of Commissioners approve a temporary ninety-day agreement with Georgia Valet Services for the lease of fifty parking spaces in the Waddell Street parking deck and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents. Some facts about this agreement. It has been approved by the City of Marietta. It's also been approved by the Downtown Marietta Development Authority and also Cobb County Legal Department has reviewed the contract and approved the contract. It is a ninety-day lease agreement. We'll have fifty spaces in the, in the seventh floor of the Waddell Deck. It will be Thursday and Friday from five to eleven and all day on Saturday. There'll be a fee of five thousand dollars for the ninety-day contract. All other spaces in the deck will be open to the public free of charge at this time. All parties will evaluate the agreement at the end of ninety days. So I ask that you consider.
Okay, Commissioner Weatherford?
A motion to approve is presented.
Second.
And discussion?
Yeah, since I wasn't there yesterday, because I I did kind of, I know that on, are we talking about the deck that's attached to this building?
Exactly, yes, we are.
Okay, now what is the, I know that this deck, that there has been some agreements over time with the City of Marietta. What exactly are those, or are there any agreements?
This is the only agreement that we.
So right now, this is our deck?
Yes.
Okay, is any of the money going to the City of Marietta?
It is not.
Okay. And so the five thousand.
Hang on, let me rephrase that. The five thousand dollars is coming to Cobb County. If there's anything from the valet service, I'm not, I'm not privy to that conversation at all.
Okay, then that's where my issue comes. It's our deck. We're getting five thousand dollars to use our deck.
Right.
But the, it seemed like the revenue that the valet service is being paid was going somewhere else.
Yeah.
And and so I have a problem with that because we're the ones that are paying for the deck, you know, and, you know, we've talked about the fact that it has been a revenue issue.
Right.
So it just seems that why would we want to give away our deck for a mere five thousand dollars without having some percentage of the revenue from the valet?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, it's, because we've already talked about the fact about possibly putting gates on here and charging for parking all the time. I mean, in essence, we're giving away revenue that I don't think we should be doing.
Yeah, we're, that's why we're doing a ninety-day program.
Well, but I mean, a ninety-day program should mirror what we want to do for the entire future.
Sure, and we have a proposals out for bid right now. They're actually back, we're reviewing those proposals now that we'll eventually bring back to y'all probably within a month for a permanent solution to both things. That's our goal. And this, and and Georgia Valet knows that we're in the middle of that process and that could change, so yes.
Both, so right now, what you're telling me though, is any revenue that Georgia Valet, is any of that going to the city or is it all going to Georgia Valet?
I do not know the answer to that question. I know they're, they're giving us five thousand dollars for the use of our debt, and that's coming to us.
Right, I understand that part, I just.
I don't know the other, other piece.
Because they're going to charge, what, five dollars, I think it was?
They are, and that, I was, I was part of the discussion with Marietta Downtown Development Authority. There was no mention about any of this revenue going to the city. But that's just what I heard during discussion. I could find out for you, okay?
I can find out right now, hang on.
Okay.
Here we are.
Oh, hey, good to see you again. Well, I'm glad you came today, thank you.
Thank you. I'm happy to address the the revenues. The ninety-day terms of agreement.
I want you, I know who you are, but just going to identify yourself.
Okay, my name is Andrew Pringle, I own and operate Georgia Valet Services. Our arrangement with the city, there is no revenue distribution back to the City of Marietta, this is on a trial basis. The scale of our operation with staffing and the small amount of spaces that we will be operating in the county deck does not generate much in our pro forma budgets for overage. I have a budget of about five thousand dollars on the operating side that we're looking to cover with our equipments, our technologies that we're using, and our labor costs. There's basically essentially a cap on what we can do with the number of staff we're going to be running from the streets to fifty spots, three days a week to kind of roll it over, hence the trial period, just to kind of, to gauge this. The only revenues that are being distributed outside of covering my labor costs and equipment costs and startup costs would be to the county for the generous offer to to utilize the the top floor and the fifty spaces up top to just see what we can generate. Happy at ninety days to make any sort of arrangements or any sort of permanent concessions going forward. But it's, it's a trial period, so we're just kind of looking to run some numbers and cover some costs.
Like.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Yeah, I think this is a very unique way to try to get us some additional revenue. And I understand Commissioner Ott's concerns, but to me, I liken it to a hotel motel operator that has two hundred dollar room nights, but the nights, the rooms are empty, we're getting zero. We've got fifty spaces on the top floor that I dare say are very ever utilized. And now we're getting revenue for something that we would not be getting revenue for. So I think a ninety-day trial to see where we are, and then we take a look at it then is very appropriate and a good offer.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I don't, I don't have a problem with it, I just wanted to kind of confirm that.
Sure.
There wasn't money going somewhere else. I mean, no, I agree with Commissioner Weatherford that any additional revenue we can generate from the parking deck is good because it ultimately, whatever we come up with, will help offset the costs of having the deck.
Commissioner Cu- Cupid?
Thank you, and one way to assess whether or not we're charging an appropriate fee too is to get some data on the usage to see how many people are actually utilizing the service. You said it's going to be five dollars per, yeah, so I mean, we'd be able to track that data and see what's appropriate.
We will, after ninety days, we will have that data and we'll share that with all of y'all.
Okay, now you said we're doing that after ninety days, but then I heard within the month we have another bid, that's all?
Yeah, we're, we're looking at taking care of both the decks, either doing it with a company or doing it ourselves.
Well, you mean taking care of the decks, you mean somebody actually managing?
Managing the decks, yes, so we're going to bring those proposals back to y'all to figure out what we do in the future with both our decks.
Okay, and that shouldn't impact what we're voting on today, okay?
And just so you know, I've talked to Major Tumlin about, Mayor Tumlin about this. He's aware of the fact of this initiative, so again, just being good neighbors here with him. So I'm glad you're here this morning, thank you for explaining that.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Any further discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero, thank you. And the last one is Sheriff's Department. And I, I'd want everybody to know that the reason I asked us to be brought to the regular agenda, I have no issue with it. I just thought the sense it involved a couple hundred thousand dollars, just for more visibility for the taxpayer, that they should see how this money's being spent rather than put it on the consent agenda, so. Colonel?
Good afternoon, Chairman Commissioners. North Central Georgia Law Enforcement Academy is one of two remaining regional academies assigned by the state through the Georgia Public Safety Training Center in Forsyth. The Sheriff's Office sponsors this academy, and doing so, we are able to provide all the mandated training for all our personnel in the Sheriff's Office. The state has extended a grant to us again this coming state fiscal period for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which will fund about a third of the operating costs and salaries for the academy. In saying that, I'm here to ask that the board approve the North Central Georgia Law Enforcement Academy's budget, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, authorize the transfer of all authorized personnel from Unit G six seventy-three to Unit G six seventy-four in the grant fund, and further authorize the chairman to execute the training services agreement with the Georgia Public Safety Training Center.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Motion to approve is presented by Colonel.
Any discussion? And I call a question. Passes five to zero, thank you. Do my best to the sheriff. All right, so let's go to tab number ten. And just want to make one announcement of Darryl Wilson, Jr. to the Cobb County Board of Elections and Registration Board Post Number Three. And this appointment replaced Miss Janice Driscoll, that goes with our thanks. And Mr. Wilson is a, is a, is a four-year Marine, and we're glad to welcome him to the board and thank him for his service. I also, at this time, just sort of inform you, I want to announce that Mr. Scott Barfield is the interim, has been appointed as the Interim Property Management Director for Cobb County. May welcome him also to our, to our, to our family. Okay, so with that, I think now we're going to tab eleven, which is Commissioner Comments. And what's going to happen here after the, after the comments are over, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn, and then we're going to, we're going to go, I'm going to call for executive session. So we're all going to be hanging around here and the rest of you can grab a Coke across the street while we're doing our business. So with that, I'll start with Commissioner Ott today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First thing I want to do is, anyone that has purchased a table or signed up for the Pops concert that was going to be at East Cobb Park on Saturday, excuse me, that has been canceled due to the inclement weather that's forecast. So just want to kind of let folks know that. And, oh, where did he go? All right, I'll wait till he gets back. I have an intern back there somewhere. Also, he probably knew I was going to introduce him.
Not a good sign.
He left on the first day.
Yeah. No, he probably knew I was going to introduce him. I have a town hall tonight at seven o'clock at St. Benedict's Church. Great opportunity to learn what's going on in the district and get your questions answered. Some folks who live in the East Cobb area have probably noticed that there is a lot of dust on Teramo Road and Lower Russell Road between the pipeline project, which they have been using water to keep the dust down. But more importantly, for the folks who live out there, DOT and the contractor have done, started the final repaving of Lower Russell Road and Teramo Road from Old Canton to Powers Ferry as a result of the pipeline project. And as promised, when, when water thoroughly started the project, the repaving will be both sides of Teramo Mill and a complete repaving so that the road will be back to in good shape. Also, I know there's, I received a lot of emails, both the chairman and I, especially from the folks in East Cobb. The contracts were signed last week for the median and right-of-way maintenance. That has begun in Ernst, and so I think folks will start seeing that the medians and the right-of-ways will start looking a lot better than they have over the last couple of weeks. And a real important thing for those folks who live mainly in the East Cobb area is, early voting has started for the Senate District Thirty-two elections to replace Judson Hill. Early voting is going on right now, and the election is actually this coming Tuesday, May sixteenth, and it's for the forty-three precincts in Cobb that are a portion of the thirty-second. It's important for folks to get out and exercise the right to vote. All right, and David has come back, so he's going to not like this, but I just want to introduce to the staff, David Hood, he's an Eagle Scout. He just finished his freshman year at Georgia College and State University, and so he'll be here as an intern for the summer. That's all I have.
Welcome. Commissioner Burrow?
Thank you, sir. I'd first like to say thank you to Sprayberry.
I'd first like to say thank you to Sprayberry Chick-fil-A for hosting the Spirit Night, which was a fundraiser to donate to the family that lost their home in the plane crash, the Kellers, and thank them for their kindness and generosity. It was a great turnout. And 10% of the proceeds from the evening dinner went to the Kellers to help them. Congratulations to Kennesaw State University Men's Golf Team. It's, they are headed to the NCAA Regionals. They will have their seventh consecutive NCAA Tournament appearance when they head to the Grove and College Grove, Tennessee on May 15th as the number seven seed. Congratulations and, and bring home a championship. The, another thanks to Superior Plumbing for the Superior Pets for Patriotic Bets Program. We had our third veteran adopt an animal from the Cobb County Animal Shelter last week. Ms. Rollick, a Navy veteran, adopted Luna, who is a pit bull terrier mixed puppy. And they were both happy to have each other, and Ms. Rollick is taking home her new best friend. So, congratulations and thank you for participating in our program. This Saturday at the Cobb County Animal Shelter, May 13th, there will be a Forever Fest from 10:00 to 4:00, 1060 Al Bishop Drive. And all the adoptions are at a discounted price, and there'll be lots of vendors there, too. So, please join us and come out and take home your, your new best friend. On May 18th, Zaxby's is sponsoring another fundraiser for the Superior Pets Program at the 2756 Sandy Plains Road location. And they will be donating 15% of their proceeds to benefit this program. So, come out and join us. Buy dinner or lunch or dinner at Zaxby's on Sandy Plains and support this very generous program, and we thank Zaxby's for their sponsorship. On May 20th, as part of the Great American Cleanup, District Three, and Keep Cobb Beautiful, will be hosting Medical Medication Disposal Day at the Superstation from 10:00 to 2:00. And that is located at 2380. Any prescriptions or over-the-counter medication and sharps will also be accepted, and you can learn more by visiting keepcobbbeautiful.org. And last but not least, the Northeast Cobb Business Association is having a 5K9 Race on June the 10th at 8:00 a.m. for the Third Annual 5K9 Race. This year's race proceeds will be used to support a service dog for an autistic child. And you can register at northeastcobbba.com. Come out and join the fun. Thank you.
Sure. Absolutely. Thank you.
I just have one more I forgot before Commissioner Weatherford. Tomorrow, the Chick-fil-A on 41 has its grand reopening after being rebuilt. And the first 100 people that go get the 52-card pack with a free Chick-fil-A meal for once a week for the rest of the year or for a year. So, that's tomorrow on 41. I expect to see you in line.
Yeah. What, what time do they open? What time? What time?
I don't know what time, but I've heard that you got to get in line pretty early to get the 100-pack.
Do you have to wear a cow outfit?
You have to camp out.
I think there is some special rewards for the people dressed like cows.
Oh, yes, Commissioner Weatherford.
Well, he had me at Chick-fil-A there. I'm trying to remember what I was going to talk about now, sir. All right. This, I have a few announcements. This Saturday at the Safety Village from 9:00 to noon, we have a Bring Your Grandparents to the Cobb Safety Village Day. And that would be a good time. There'll be 30-minute interactive programs, including Bus Lake and Fireworks Safety, a public show and Rules of the Road. It's a free event. Registration is required. To register, call 770-596-STAR. Never mind. Your grandparents need to take you somewhere else on Saturday? Possibly Chick-fil-A would be a good place for them to go. How do I get into this stuff? Okay. Well, I mean, you know. All right. How about Smoke on the Lake BBQ Festival? You can go there. That's Saturday and Friday night and Saturday at Lake Acworth in Acworth. It's the North Cobb Rotary Club, and it's a great event. On Friday night, there will be tables you can rent, concert and fireworks, and all day Saturday is a barbecue contest. And you can taste teams from all over the Southeast in different categories to sample your favorite professional and semi-pro barbecue. It's a great event. Every Friday now, Acworth is having on Main Street in front of First Baptist Church, a farmer's market, and that runs through October, and that's from 8:00 a.m. to noon. If you like some fresh vegetables, I know other locations in Marietta and Kennesaw have it as well. But if you're up in the northwest part of the county, that happens every week on Friday. And the Sheriff's Office is offering some firearm education and safety training events coming up. If you're interested, you can check on that. But there's one May 11th, July 13th, September 14th, and November 2nd. Those are all good events for firearm safety. We can say that those are well-needed, and we appreciate the Sheriff's Office doing that. Now, I almost hesitate to talk about this last one because of the Chick-fil-A and things of that nature. But anyway, Cobb County 4-Hers placed top five in regional competition in poultry judging contests. You can't make this up. This really happened. And Justice Benjamin, Benjamin, a fourth grader, actually was overall winner scoring out of 97 participants. And I know, Commissioner Burrow, this is near and dear to your heart, the poultry and that.
Only if they go to Chick-fil-A. They are if they end up at Chick-fil-A.
Yes. So, go to Chick-fil-A, go get barbecue, and thanks to the 4-Hers, and I am done, sir. Thank you, sir.
I don't know what to say, Commissioner Cupid, but you're on your own.
Now that we're done with the comedic portion of the public comment, I, in all seriousness, would like to recognize some employees here of Cobb County. In recognition of Water Professionals Appreciation Day, which was the first Monday in May, and National Drinking Water Week, which is this week, we honor Cobb County Water System staff for their successful efforts for maintaining high water quality. Water professionals provide critical services that are often taken for granted, but are often essential to practically everything we do. These are staff who work diligently to ensure that our tap water is clean and safe and that we can dispose of our wastewater with the assurance that it will be treated properly and returned to the environment in ways that protect our water resources. In this last year and over the years, Cobb Water has received numerous awards for distinction in operations and outreach in public educational programs. And if you don't mind, I'm going to read this exhaustive list of awards that our employees here at Cobb County Water have received. Those receiving individual awards include Ernest Earn, who was the recipient of the WEF Life Membership, and he is president of the Georgia Association of Water Professionals. Jeremy Eas was inducted into the Golden Manhole Society from the Georgia Association of Water Professionals. Our very own Steve McCullers was the recipient of the honorary membership in the Water Professionals Association. Kathy Nguyen was the recipient of Georgia Warren Fuller Award from the Georgia Section of AWWA. Eric Olson was the recipient of the Silver Water Drop AWWA Membership Tenure Award. Marvin Richards was the recipient of the Silver Water Drop Membership Tenure Award. And Ray Twiman is the Water Distribution Operator of the Year for District Three of the Georgia Association of Water Professionals. On top of that, there were some awards given to the organization as a whole. They were recognized for their education program, Adopt a Stream Program led by Jen McCoy, and Water Efficiency Program led by Kathy Nguyen. And they were recognized as best in the state, and Water Efficiency Program was selected as best nationally among large utilities by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. So, with that, if you don't mind, just recognizing them for all their... All right. Some things going on in District Four. I was remiss in not including this, but everyone knows every year we celebrate Mabelton Day. And they have their 12th Annual Mabelton Day coming up this Saturday at Maple House Complex off of Floyd Road. They start off with the race at 8:00 a.m., and they have events that last until 4:00 p.m. I encourage you and your family to come out. I believe our chairman's going to be out this year, which is wonderful. And if you want to learn more about that, please Google Mabelton Day, and you'll see a list of activities that you can get involved in. Some additional activities going on in the district are included in my newsletter. I don't want to be overbearing, but one thing I do want to let you know is that we're going to have our annual block party with public safety, and that's going to be Saturday, May 20th at the Sanford Road, at the park off of Sanford Road. And this is in Smyrna, Georgia, and this is from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And we always have a great time every year and look forward to you coming out and joining us. Lastly, I want to recognize an element of public safety, which some of us may not know about, which is our Police Athletic League Program. They provide sporting events for youth every year, and they recently sent about 12 athletes to the state meet this year and actually had three state champions. One was Jada Martian, 13, 14-girls age group. She won the discus and shot put. Xavier Johnson, 11 and 12-boys age group, he won the standing long jump. And Devon Clark won our 400-meter race. So, I just want to thank all the coaches out there for Cobb Pal, for all of your work to volunteer and serving so many of our youth. Hopefully, we'll have the opportunity to bring the participants of that program up before you so you can get a sense of just the great accomplishments that our, that our police and our volunteers have helped to inspire for the past six years out on the track. With that, I'm going to turn things over to you, Mike.
Commissioner Cupid? I also would like to highlight, this is Annual County Clerks Week, and I know Pam is sitting over there cringing, but the bottom line is, we, we do so many things so well in this county that we just sort of take for granted. And this agenda, the preparation goes into it in publishing it and getting the, getting it out in a timely manner. You know, that's, that's to Pam and her magnificent staff of Angela, who never shows up on television, but she's here every time. And then we have Lori Barton and Robin Presley. So, I really want to commend your whole staff for the incredible work that you do for this county and to make it look so easy. And for those of you who don't know, and I, I'm not going to, I didn't memorize this, here's some of the things that these, these magnificent young ladies do. They take minutes. They maintain the ordinance and resolution files. They keep the county's historical records. They process open records and serve as the clearinghouse for information about local government. So, they, they, they represent what is best about this county in getting out information in a timely manner, and I appreciate all that you do. Thank you very much, and best of luck this week. The second one is every now and then, something happens that makes this job worth it. And, and we do great things in this county, and this board does magnificent things. This is not a, this is not a mic-voice board. This is a board that, as you saw this morning, thinks for itself, and I saw this morning that Bob Ott can never miss another meeting. All right? Because every, two of those things that we did today is because you weren't there. So, Bob, Commissioner Ott was, was ill yesterday, and I can assure you, the next time he's ill, I will personally drive down and drag him out of his sick bed and drag him to the meeting. But you saw this morning how well, you know, how the board, they see something different. They're not afraid to stand up and say something. But this board did something I thought was remarkable earlier this year. We had a young lady with an autistic child, and she's married to a, to one of our finest police officers. And she came to me asking if there was some way we could add her child to our, our, our health policy. And I was a little reluctant to do it, not because I didn't feel compassionate for her cause, but the old famous, if you do it for one, then you got to do it for everybody. But she came to me, and I thought that we had a way that we could help her. So, I took her to the board, and to my, to my shock, he's like, well, why aren't we doing this now? So, the board passed this amendment to our, to our county health policy, allowing this family to, to bring their son to the, to, added to the health policy where his, his autism issues could be, to be addressed. And Sunday, I'm sitting in church, and I'm tapped on the shoulder, and I turn around, and there's the lady who had come to us with her husband talking about this case. And she said that the policy had kicked in just in time for her son to be, to be enrolled in a program that he'd been on the waiting list for. It was a very moving moment because of all the money we spend here, of all the things that we do, ultimately gets back to the people of this county that I think that we do the best for. And just even if it's for one person, I think that signifies that this board, it deals with big numbers, but it also care about one person. And I want to commend the board and let them know that great story, that because of what you did, we have a family today that's part of the Cobb family that's having their son involved in a program where he's going to be able to lead a life like ours and the same opportunity we have to, to succeed. So, my, my hats off to the board for that remarkable action. And like I said, that alone has made it a great month, and I'm happy for that family. So, that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and I, do I hear a motion to, to convene an executive session? No. We're going to take, I'll just, I'll move this. So, it's been moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do you have a discussion? Call a question? So, say, anybody say aye? Aye. So, now I'm going to recess us and then relocate us upstairs to the, to the, to the boardroom. Okay. Does that sound good?
My sister just got a job.
Well, how about that? Did we do that? Was that, was that an agenda item?
She was working.
She was working.
(laughing)